Yeah, good evening, everyone. Officially open tonight's December 5th, Southham Planning Board Meeting 2022. All members are present, thank you very much for coming out. It's also televised, we welcome our Channel 191 audience as well. And our agenda is pretty brief tonight with agenda items. We're continuing now with the bylaw revisions with our consultant here, Richard Harris from South Hadley. And we're working on the recodification of the chapters. And we'll pick up where we left off and ask Richard to take over at this time where we're at.
Okay, let me try and find the section 7-20.
Well, you may have your laptops or whatever, but it's really, if you remember, it's like the table of contents at the beginning of the bylaws that he has revised and actually he's condensed because they were so strewn about.
Yeah, one thing's when you codify, sometimes old ones, they just get shorter just by the nature of codification because they look more organized. 7-20, Southampton Water Supply Protection District. I've taken the existing one and just reformat, codified it. There's some general comments I have. There are some definitions in this section that I think need to be moved to the definition section of the zoning bylaw. As a general rule, unless there's something real unique in a definition, it should be all under the definition section of a bylaw. Otherwise, you have people looking everywhere for the definition of a term. And you want people really get in the habit of looking at one section for the definitions. There is a district delineation and references a map, but doesn't reference the date on the map. And that's the question I have is, is there a date on the map? And so we should reference that date in the bylaw for the Water Supply Protection District.
For those of you who have the copy, he's under section 720. What paragraph are you referring to now?
Section 720-4A.
Okay.
It talks about the Water Supply Protection District is established to include all lands and references a map entitled Water Supply Protection District.
Gotcha.
And if there's a date on that map, we really should reference that date. I know from discussions with South Hadley, when we were doing their, we were discussing revisions to the Water Supply Protection District. There's references to two different maps and we had one we were going by. And so it needs to be real clear as to what date of map that is.
Gotcha.
So if we can find that, we need to try and find the date.
It says it's on file with the town clerk, right?
It should be on file with the town clerk.
So that would help us find the date.
Yeah. And hopefully she had, your town clerk has it. There's a requirement that property owner pay for verification of the boundaries of the district when they're in dispute or may charge the owner. That can be very expensive. And I'm not sure, no, it's not just a surveyor. It means they would have to basically hire a hydrologist and redo the entire delineation study and then get down to their property. And so I'm not sure, no, I just want to raise that as a, be sure everyone understands that's what that means. It's not simply a, sir, with a zoning district map typically, if there's a dispute, the town lays it out and someone wants to dispute it, they hire a surveyor and survey it out. Water Supply Protection District wouldn't involve a survey. It would involve a hydrogeologist with a new delineation study or evaluation of the delineation study.
Would you just refer that to the water department?
No, no. Because water department is not going to do the analysis of where the water comes from. And that's what the Water Supply Protection District map refers to, is how, where all the underground water is coming from for the well.
What's your suggestion?
I haven't seen this in a provision before.
So is it necessary?
I don't think it's necessary. I think it's, I think what you could do is just say, this is the boundary and the building commissioner or the planning board, whomever, is the authority and they want to appeal, they can appeal. And then they have to use whatever resources they have to substantiate it.
All right, so you're going to rewrite that paragraph, are you suggesting?
I would suggest rewriting.
So in the event of a dispute, it would be the person, it would be the town's responsibility to fund the hydro.
No, it would be, the town would say, this is the boundary.
Yes.
And if then you say, I don't think my property's in it.
Yep.
The town's determined it is. It is under zoning law, so you can appeal to the zoning board of appeals. And you can present whatever documentation you have, evidence you have, that you feel would substantiate your position. They make determination and then if you don't like it, then you can appeal that to court. Instead of going through the process where the town may engage a professional and hire somebody and then charge you for it.
Yes.
You determine how you want to support your case.
Very good, yeah. What you got next?
5-25A, 725A. There's a reference to principal activity. Manufacturing, use, process, store, or dispose of hazardous materials or waste as a principal activity. Is there a definition of principal activity? Is it something tells 50% of their operation or is it, how do you define what principal activity is? My preference would be to just take out principal activity and just say, no, which manufacture, process, use, store, or dispose of hazardous materials or waste.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that should be there. Anybody else's opinion.
I just want to make sure we define what hazardous materials are. What are we referencing something?
Well, it's, or waste including but not limited to metal plating, chemical, wood preserving, furniture stripping, dry cleaning, auto repair.
Yeah, I think he's got a good point that maybe what we should do is somewhere here is indicate that not necessarily hazardous, but any process includes but not limited to metal plating, any of those processes that involve these activities, these sub-activities. Underground storage and/or transmission of petroleum products excluding LPG, liquefied petroleum gas. My question, why does it exclude LPG? Is that something that the town wants to leave as is or is, I'm not sure why?
You think that was a typo and it should have been including instead of excluding?
I research and see if I can, sort of other communities have for that. It just struck me as, why would we want to exclude liquefied petroleum gas? I know South Hattie, there's effort to not exclude anything being prohibited, just prohibit Because people get very concerned about water supply and here it'd be even more critical because you're totally dependent on your water supply here.
Mm-hmm. So you'll check that out?
Do people, does anyone in town use underground, I mean, that's an underground propane tank, right? And we're talking about liquefied petroleum gas.
Yeah, I've seen.
Underground storage and/or transmission of petroleum products excluding LPG. So LPG be permitted, all other petroleum products would be stored, underground storage and/or transmission. So you cannot transmit other gas, but you could transmit LPG and underground storage as well.
Right. Does it only refer to the underground storage or is it also the above-ground storage?
Underground storage and/or transmission. Above-ground storage it would not apply to. But how do you get the gas into the above-ground storage if you don't transmit it? I don't see how you, that's possible, but.
So what are you recommending?
So I'll check and see what other communities have in terms of this restriction and just be sure we're consistent with the state model or what's the common practice in the area.
It strikes me that that should be like a state law kind of thing. I mean, is there a danger? Why would one community have laws different than others?
The state DEP has a model that communities adopted and some communities changed it over time, some communities didn't. And some updated as more information came from DEP and some didn't change.
What does DEP recommend?
So I'll check and see what their model says too.
I just know my parents had lived in a relatively new house in Greenfield area and they had an underground propane tank. I mean, that's not uncommon, right?
Yeah, no. But it is more concerning to have an underground tank when you have a water supply protection district area. That's the more critical issue is underground storage of any.
And we have all water supply issues here. We don't have a public water supply, so.
Okay, makes sense.
7-20, 6A3, change road to drive. This just be applicable commonly. 7-26B. Yeah, and I've seen this for 6B. The use of sodium chloride for ice control shall be minimized consistent with the public highway safety requirements. I'm not sure what minimize means. Do you want to prohibit it completely or minimize? Basically, if you tell somebody who's using it, they have to minimize it, they're going to use as much as they want. Because they're going to say, that's what's required in order to deal with the problem.
All right, because this is specifically the water supply districts we're discussing.
Where's the 726? What section are we in, 726 you said?
720, 7-20, subsection 6, item B.
720, my head right now, number 6.
Well, wait, I can check the email.
What are they using now, Perry? What do they use? Is there requirements on?
My guess is DPW is probably just using sodium chloride. I know South Hatt DPW does prevent what they want even though we tell them they shouldn't do this or shouldn't be doing that. DPWs will tend to use whatever is cheapest that they can get by with.
That's right. What are you suggesting on this one?
I'm just raising questions, should it be prohibited in the Water Supply Protection District? Or is there a better way to define what is by minimize?
Isn't that, get Randall involved in that?
Yeah, I think Randall gets involved in that, but.
DPW director to find out what his ideas on that.
I'll send Randall an email.
First of all, it's not only us.
Right.
The town, meaning the states maintaining roads along Route 10, so.
But we can't regulate the state.
Exactly. That's, just to make that clear.
Right. And they had followed whatever DEP mandates for the state.
I mean, the other thing is not to keep digging on this topic, the concept of monitoring for salt levels, if that's something that we tend to do in terms of setting the policy that we need to be moving forward with. And that's going to kind of give us a general idea. It's like if we have a high salt content in the water, then that's going to tell us what we should be focusing on, what to make of it.
What to minimize, yeah.
So would the water department be able to tell us that from their equipment at the pumping stations with their monitoring? Perhaps?
You want to maybe CC the water department guy on that email with Randall and find out? Wouldn't you?
Yes.
If they're not detecting a problem, then.
So he's going to write to both Randall and the water commissioner to get their take on that for the language.
And then, item 6D, there's a section that was all caps and I took all caps out. I didn't see reason for all caps.
You don't want to yell at people?
Yeah, I see that from in different places and sometimes, and I just wonder why. 6E. Yes.
Underground storage tanks for oil, gasoline, or other petroleum products shall be placed in a building in a concrete, in a concrete basement or around a.
Is this a current, I mean, this is.
Yes.
I mean.
This is what the current bylaw says.
No, 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 not our current bylaw, but I'm saying from a state standard.
I'm not sure. I haven't looked at what the state DEP model is yet.
Okay. Because concrete, to me, sounds like, I mean, it says impervial surface, so I guess that takes care of my concern.
Yeah, the phrase, and I said, shall be placed in a building in a, I think maybe in a building with a concrete basement.
Not with, in a.
Or on a concrete basement. It just, I read through that and read through and it just, I kept stumbling over it. 7A.
Infeasible?
Infeasible. As you know, everything is feasible if you've got enough money. Dry roads shall be used only where other methods are infeasible. You can always use other methods, it just may be more costly. So question, what does infeasible mean? And is that the right terminology you want to use in this? Because infeasible is a broad term. What's infeasible to me is non-infeasible to.
So I think, wouldn't that be an area that was probably heavily clay, for instance? Just as an example, one example anyway.
Well, not necessarily.
No? Dry well and clay isn't going to work, is it?
Well, I think it would help if, for instance, if we're talking about infeasible due to soil and rock conditions, subsurface conditions, to state infeasible due to existing subsurface conditions.
Yeah.
But just saying infeasible means it gets into the financial aspect.
Legal, yes, exactly.
Legal, financial. So if we're talking about subsurface conditions.
728, 8A.
Yes.
Oh, hey, it's just, I'm sorry, go back to 7A.
Mm-hmm.
First sentence. I think we want to say maximum extent possible.
Okay.
Consistent with the state, state verbiage.
Instead of extent possible, maximums near possible.
Yeah.
Who's that, 7A?
Yes. The first sentence, third line, insert maximum.
Okay.
It talks about uses allowed by special permit by Board of Appeals. I think all special permits should be done by one entity, not hydrology. But the issue I have particularly with this, this is an overlay district. So what you do where a use requires a special permit by, let's say, the planning board in the underlying district and by the Board of Appeals in the overlay district. Essentially requires people go to both boards for special permit. One grants it, one doesn't. That creates a quandary issue for the town.
That's a very good question.
I think it's far better to have one entity doing all special permits.
Isn't that what most of the, this whole revision is gauged around? We're taking special permits away from zoning and putting it in?
I wasn't sure if that's what you're doing or not, but I would strongly urge that.
That's what I think Larry was leading up to.
So I would suggest changing this to planning board. And just have, because I read through that and I said, if they grant yes and they say no.
So Paul, what zoning Board of Appeals special permits can be authorized by the ZBA? In other words, are we saying all special permits should be under planning board?
That's what I believe that Larry was leading up to, to streamline the process.
Yeah.
I highly recommend it.
Not just this.
And the ZBA just pretty much handled variances and, you know, stuff like that. Because there's been a few instances over the years where we didn't have any, we would like to have weighed in on site plan and stuff like that and we didn't have any authority. You know, when it came to trees screening, landscaping, you know, stuff like that, lighting. We had no say in it. All we could do is probably generate a letter to them to have them consider some of these changes. So now it's pretty much coming here.
It makes sense because otherwise a citizen could like play one board against another and depending on who's elected, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And there's, the criteria for special permit is more consistent with the type of use that the planning board does than the type of use that a typical ZBA does. ZBA looking at variances and hardships. Those criteria have no relationship to the criteria for site plan view or special permit or subdivision or any of those areas. Those criteria relate more to the uses and not to the uniqueness and hardships of property on particular parcel.
I think that conversation's very important because it gets at the root of one of the purposes of this whole recodification effort. So it's good for us to all be in agreement and have that.
I also think for consistency's sake, we should either call it the zoning Board of Appeals or the Board of Appeals. So I, you know, I find it a little confusing, so maybe.
It is.
Yeah.
So I'll change that planning board. Of course, I'm on, yeah. 8A, 82. The, any enlargement, intensification, or alteration of an existing commercial or industrial I'm not sure what intensification means. I know and I see it, but I'm not sure I could really define it.
By the way, I looked up infeasible versus unfeasible. Unfeasible is more popular these days, the meanings are the same, but infeasible is kind of an old way of saying the same thing. So what's, now we're looking up intensification.
You're talking old.
I went through that. Which word is we're looking at now, intensification?
So the question I have is, not intensification is more concentrated, it's making more use of the same piece of property generally. But that would occur if you enlarged the building? That would occur if you expanded the amount of use of the building? I'm not sure if intensification.
I think it's kind of redundant to be honest with you. Just take it out of there.
Or like increase capacity? I mean, if you're increasing the out, I mean, we're talking about water hazardous, you know, if you're increasing some sort of outflow, I don't know if that was what it was intended
I say whoever said take it out. It makes sense to me if it's not clear and it's not adding anything, enlargement or alteration.
Because if you're larger use, your output of waste is enlargement of the use.
It'd be intensified anyway.
Okay.
Okay. 8B, requirements for special permit. I don't believe that a zoning bylaw or general bylaw should detail the application requirements. Those need to be in your board's policies and procedures. Because the problem you have is when you put in bylaw, for instance, if you put in there, six copies are required. And then you go to more digital format, you only need two hard copies, but you need a PDF of it or digital format. You can't acquire that because your bylaw says this is what they have to submit. You put in policies and procedures, the board can amend those.
Without a hearing.
As conditions change. Or you can have a hearing. I always recommend boards have hearings before they change the policies and procedures, but you don't have to have town meeting and vote. You can just, you can hold a hearing, give public input and maybe change what you're proposing, but you can still adopt it and implement it without going through town meeting and the turn to the general's office for approval.
Wouldn't you still say though, under this requirements, wouldn't you refer to policies and procedures so people?
Yes.
Know where to go?
You want to refer to those, but don't want to detail them in.
Yeah, right, right.
In here. And that also gets into the issue of, I've seen this in bylaws where it says you had to submit copies to the town engineer. But then the town doesn't have an engineer, so who do they submit it to? If it's in policies and procedures, you can adjust those as you need to. My only exception to that is if there's something really unique that you want to be sure that the policies and procedures address, then it should be noted in here. Such as if you're talking about housing development and you want to be sure that the policies and procedures talk about the character of housing in the area. Then it would make reference that policies and procedures should ensure that they address Then it would make reference that the policies and procedures should ensure that they address following issues as well. And that gives guidance and direction to the planning board without specifying it has to be in the application. And my next comment, eight B, there's items that are referred to be part of the plan that are not part of the plan. Things that don't map, for instance. Operating procedures, that's not part of a plan submitted, that's part of documentation supporting an application. Eight C one.
So going back to eight B, one. They're supposed to follow a list of chemicals, pesticides, fuels, et cetera, associated with normal household use. Is that ever disputed? What's normal? I don't know if that's a big issue, but.
So this is, this, I mean, in my opinion, this section talks about more of, like, commercial industrial use, right? Greater than household use implies something stronger than fantastic.
Exactly, but, you know.
The more common term is customary, customarity associated with household use.
Even that.
That's vague, but.
Yeah.
That tends to be more typically used as a reference. But the complete list, for instance, that wouldn't be on a plan. That'd be part of your supporting documentation that you require. And your policies and procedures, you need to be sure that you have a separate section on applications within the water supply protection district must contain these as well. But I'm not sure, given Southampton's situation, that may be something you want to require just by all applications. I mean, it's just all commercial applications. Because I think the entire town pretty much is in the district. C one, we would take out completely because you shouldn't have to state here that any particular board has to follow the requirements of the special permit procedures. That's, if you had to state that in the bylaw here, that that board shouldn't be doing the special permit, very frankly.
So just remove it?
So I would take that out completely.
Sure.
C two. Yeah. The proposed use must in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing potential quality or quantity of water that is available in the water supply protection district. And the term in no way, or phrase in no way, is a near impossible, because even temporarily when you do excavation and you have runoff that has some type of dirt in it, that could, by some argue, have some impact, adverse impact on water supply. It's a temporary, and it is mitigated by the fact that it is temporary and it's not introducing new stuff, but the phrase in no way. Now, if it would say during construction thereafter should not substantially adversely affect, that's one thing. But just in no way adversely affect is a very, I don't see how you could ever.
Well, very subjective, really.
In no way is a absolute phrase.
Take it out.
Also, wherever Board of Appeals is shown as being changed to planning board, right?
Yes. And I'm gonna take C one out completely, because C one doesn't, isn't necessary. And C three.
Can I ask a question about all this stuff regarding the water protection, though? Maybe this is an absurd idea, but given that there have been some subdivisions built over areas that are more prone to damage of our water supply there over the aquifer or something, should we have input from our water commission or our, you know, or is it strictly up, I mean, should we put in here that the water commission should be able to give us their opinion on certain, certain things?
They're notified about, with the public hearing for comments on any subdivision. They're CC'd like all the town departments are to weigh in on.
Okay.
In your policies and procedures, for all site plans, all subdivision plans, all special permits, there should be a set of departments such as water, DPW, Board of Health, that are, building commissioners, that are asked to comment on the application that was addressed.
Okay.
Point of clarification, in this whole section, is a tendency for what? For who's the proposed, who's the entity that's proposing, who's the entity that's regulated by this?
Any private property that, any, any entity other than state that's within the water supply protection district.
Including private residential buildings?
Yes.
Is that clear anywhere?
Actually, right up front, right?
For any land, any use of land.
Under number one, is that strong?
Yeah, one A has it. Is that, is that clear enough?
Does any use of land or buildings.
Which may reduce quality of its water resources. That's not subjective.
I will say, I know Southampton's has a more extensive section on restricted and prohibited uses part of cause of controversy that occurred over the years. Because it also relates to, and this, and this gets into issue, it relates to agriculture uses. But as you know, under chapter forty eight, section three, agriculture uses over five acres are exempt from zoning. And my guess, animal feedlots generally going to be over five acres, or those uses going to be over five acres.
So on one A, one minor comment, what about changing the word reduce to impact? Assuming it could have any impact? Is that stronger?
Well, the reduce is actually more appropriate, because you don't want to do something that's going to have a positive impact on, you don't want to restrict something that's going to have positive impact on the quality.
But none of these restrictions would come into play if it was something that was kind of a positive impact, right? I mean, and I'm struggling to think of what would have a positive impact, other than tearing up a parking lot and putting in grass.
I can't conceive of something that would, but I think by noting that any use which may reduce the quality is the focus. If it's going to improve the quality, you have no problem with it.
Okay.
What about negatively impact? Not just, I like the word impact, too.
I don't think it matters either way, you know? You get, gets the point across. Yeah, which may negatively impact. You can use the both words.
Yeah.
Which may negatively impact the quality of its water resources.
That's what I said, yeah, yeah.
What about negatively impact?
I like that.
Before you quit that, now that we're on that last line, it says any use. Should that also put, like, slash or use or redevelopment of land or buildings?
Well, that's a use.
Or is it just use?
It falls under the use, right?
Is it, is it?
That would, that still fall under the use, because if you redevelop property from a shopping center to a industrial use, that's, that's still redevelopment, that's still a use.
So use is the proper term in all?
I think use is the proper term. C three, I don't think is even, eight C three, I don't think is necessary. Because it should apply to all special permits.
Eight C three?
Yeah, it says shall not grant a special permit under this section unless the petition's application materials include, in the board's opinion, sufficiently detailed definite and credible information to support positive findings in relation to standards. Don't think, that's not even necessary.
So you're going to eliminate section one point oh seven three B? Is that it?
C three, yes. And then. And I've already actually made this, the last item on nine A, I've already done. I've already made that change. That was all one paragraph, and one should be a subsection of that. And I've highlighted different sections to make sure I go back and check the reference, the citations, that they're still valid. I do that whenever I reorganize something, because they may have changed reference in state law, or the mere fact of requalification may change the reference within zoning bylaw.
So can I ask, like, a practical question regarding all of this? So right now, we're, we're a town that really needs to think about a new public safety complex or building, okay? But what I've learned is that, for example, a fire department has to have special considerations, because if a fire person goes into a fire and then has to wash off their equipment, that's very toxic kind of stuff that washes off. So what?
But they have procedures for that. That's, that's not our thing.
Wait a second, they have procedures for it, but what I'm asking is, in terms of building the fire department, let's say we're going to build a new one. Does, what would happen? Do they have to come to the planning board and say, we're going to build this? Would the planning board have responsibilities to make sure that it's, the water supply is protected? That's where I'm going.
I would say yes.
Yeah, okay. And is this all covered under here? Am I, am I going way out on a, on a limb here?
I don't know.
No, it's, it, it's not the water supply protection district bylaw that would make that determination, it's your zoning bylaw in general. Does your zoning bylaw require site plan review or special permit for any public building? And that's what I, I'd look at that, I don't know. You probably know it better than me. If your zoning bylaw require, I know Southampton's bylaw is written such that public buildings are allowed by site plan review. Therefore, when the District Two Fire Department wanted to do a new fire station, they had go to the planning board for site plan review, not special permit, but site plan review for that. And the schools had to do that as well, although there is the forty eight, section three issue. So it goes back to what your zoning bylaw requires or doesn't require. Does it require public buildings to go through site plan review?
I don't see why not.
It should.
It should, yeah.
I guess the point I was making about why, in your case, because you're referencing how the fire department would, would deal with the disposal of hazardous chemicals, right? Because you're referencing a case where.
Right, right, yeah.
So they, they would be, I think they would fall under the lines of, of, you know, they're not leaching hazardous materials into the groundwater, and they have to prove that, as if they were a business.
Right, but the state regulates.
Yeah.
What the fire department has part of its operations.
Yep, right.
Maintenance, so I'm, I'm a little, I'm.
I wouldn't think it.
Touching my head a lot.
I know, I would not expect the planning board to delve into the operating procedures of the fire department or the police department. No, the police department uses ammunition, which has lead in it.
So I'm not.
Planning board doesn't get into that, but, because that's covered by, by state procedures.
And that's, that's enough.
I'm not talking about the procedures, I'm talking about the building itself, and that's what this is all about, isn't it?
Right, but, but the fire department, they, they go through training in terms of maintaining or treating hazardous materials.
I'm told that right now, our fire department can't even wash their equipment here in Southampton, they have to go to East Hampton.
That's, that's exactly, so what's, so what's the concern, I guess?
So if we have a new fire department, are we hoping that they can do their, follow their procedures in Southampton, in the Southampton Fire Department?
That would be a design procedure that the building architect would have to coordinate with the fire department.
Basically, they had to build a self-contained.
That's right.
Decontamination.
Right, but that, that's just.
But that's not going to fall under here, under protection of the water supply?
No.
It's not, okay.
That's a state, that's a state regulation that, that certainly has that. Procedures need to be respected.
And the question is whether or not this incorporated into a building gets into a cost benefit analysis that architect and the town have to do. Is, is it more cost effective to have them go to East Hampton to decontaminate, or do we want to go to the expense of incorporating this into a fire station?
That's a good question. Okay.
Can I, since we're kind of, just a little bit off topic here.
Not intentional.
No, no, my question, my question's going to be off topic. Not off topic, but going back a little bit.
Road of order.
Point of order. Just to, what's, what prompted my earlier question about who does this pertain to? Who, who are we trying to regulate? We're very clear on certain sections, subsections, where we discuss businesses and industrial uses, okay? And I'm not trying to find a loophole or anything, but does that seem like that doesn't need to be identified as businesses and industrial? Because we say all uses, but then we, we have a, you know, section four or five talks about businesses and industrial use. And we repeat businesses again in subsequent sections.
Like five F references residential septic tanks as well, septic systems. So I don't think it, it's not clear to me that it's strictly businesses, and it shouldn't be, it should be all uses, residential and business and commercial uses.
Right, so I guess my point is, under five A, and, I mean, technically, we should not, shouldn't we spell out all uses, not just identify business, industrial, and agricultural? Are we isolating into those three?
Well, residential don't, doesn't, residential should not be manufacturing, using, processing, storing, or disposing of hazardous materials.
That's where I'm going with this.
Uh-huh. If they do, chances, if they, if a residence is engaged in metal plating, chemical manufacturing, wood preserving, furniture stripping, dry cleaning, and auto repair, then they're not really a residential use.
What if I watched Breaking Bad one weekend?
I've seen the whole thing twice.
I'm, I'm kidding about that part, but the point I'm making is, we have all uses, but then we start drilling down into specific lane uses. And frankly, even F, we, we say residential septic systems. There are. And frankly, even F, we, we say residential septic systems, there are non-residential septic systems. So, that to me is a qualifier that, that it should be...
And that, that's a hard question, whether it should be limited residential, or should just say septic systems.
That's where I'm going, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and if you say in septic systems, I open parentheses, residential and non-residential, so that it's very clear that, that it was consciously intended to be cover everybody.
So, for example, in Westfield, there was a developer that wanted to put something on Roos Road, or Roos Road, that's also in Aquifer District, there, in the Barnes, Aquifer District. They were proposing a commercial use that was proposing septic tanks, right? And that was obviously a huge concern with the city of Westfield. So, I guess, the point I'm trying to make is, or the question I'm trying to ask is, there are different procedures or different steps that, that would be taken for residential versus commercial, or not commercial, or whatever term you wanna use. So that, that's why I'm kind of focusing on the discussion of getting rid of those descriptors and then making it more general.
I would agree, I would suggest that it would be helpful to have in here a greater clarity that, of restrictions on residential uses, because it does imply that it's on business industrial. And one of the issues we've had, we had in South Hadley was, how does a homeowner know that they are in a water supply protection district, and therefore they need, they're restricted in terms of their fertilizer, in terms of their de-icing of their driveways, and if it's a private roadway, that, de-icing of the roadway? And I think it would be helpful to make it very clear that in residential area, that the following is particular for residential, because very frankly, a business is easier to regulate many ways than a homeowner.
And that would lie with the building inspector for the average building permit. They would have to, he would have to know that, hey, by the way, you're in a water supply district, you're, you're under these restrictions.
But maybe helpful in this section of it to draw that out.
Yeah.
Don't you say?
Well, yeah, maybe the, maybe the enforcement is with the building inspector, or at the time of the permit, but I, I agree with you that if it's more generalized, then it'll be more easier to...
If it's drawn out and spelled out in this section of particular note is restrictions in residential areas, that'd be, residential uses, that'd be helpful, I think.
Yeah, because you're talking about prohibited uses, and this is where I think, and then under that, we get very specific, we'll be a little more general.
And with residential, it's not necessarily prohibited, it's more of the restricted category.
Of toxic material.
That you're restricted, not, you don't, residential, you restrict the type of fertilizer you use, and the nitrate loading, and those factors, you don't prohibit them, you just restrict them. And so I drafted something for that.
Very good.
So, um, and maybe this is covered, but I'm just making sure we have this discussion here, or this, this just general thought. What, how do we regulate if there's an industrial use that doesn't, and I'm not, and I don't know if this is the correct statement I'm making, but that doesn't fit any of these prohibited uses? Particularly, let's say there's a facility that has a leaking or pre-treatment basin, or something that, 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 that is, let's say in a lined, that has like a special lined clay, or whatever, something that, that, that has some gray water that is disposed from a, from a industrial process. How do we regulate that?
Should there be testing requirements for any sort of system like that?
Well, that's, that's saying that it's allowed, but I'm saying, what if we wanna just be clear and say, "It's prohibited"?
That's true. Everything's changed over time, a business comes in, everything they do is allowed, and then they change a process.
But we can, can't we issue waivers to this too?
Business, no, businesses and industrial uses which involve onsite disposal of processed wastewater are prohibited. And gray water be processed wastewater.
Right.
And so that's prohibited.
Can you think of an example law?
Well, there's a place in Ware that treats, that, that makes the, the registered tape...
The what, the registered tape?
Registered tape, or like, you know how you get your credit card machine?
Thermal tape.
Thermal tape, right? And that has a gray water output that, that has to be treated. And I think they have a outside basin of sorts that, that helps them, I don't, I don't remember the process, so I'm, it probably sounds stupid trying to explain it, but the point is, as I remember, it was certainly outside. Then they come, let it, they, they let it evaporate, and I think they come with a truck, or not truck, but a front-end loader, and then they dump it into a solid waste takeoff.
Somebody else...
It's like a dredging process type.
So, if they're doing onsite disposal, it'd be prohibited. If they are doing outside storage of it and then transporting it for offsite disposal, it's not prohibited.
It's allowed, yeah. So, would that prohibit the town from developing a...
Yeah, it should be a lined basin that would prohibit, exclude any infiltration of the waste into the groundwater.
I mean, eventually we'd like one of those, right? A waste water treatment facility, or...
It'd be a while.
Yeah, but, but then again, just, and I'm just being a stickler on the...
I, I know where you're going with that, because then you have the issue of, well, it doesn't say you had to have a lined basin for onsite storage.
Yeah, but you'll be dumb enough not to, I mean, if you're from the proponent, I'm not gonna do that, but, but then, one thing that's kind of bothering me here, here, is also the, the term principal activity. Same thing, five A one. Where we were just talking about that, where that, where my concern fell under that definition.
We were gonna, we were gonna strike principal activity.
Oh, but, but principal activity, okay.
Yeah, we were gonna strike the...
Alright, alright. I strike my, let me just say a statement here.
Okay? Put it on that one?
I think so. The next one is wireless communication facility bylaw.
Alright.
That's great.
Which one's this now? This is a...
Seven dash thirty.
Do we wanna include discussion there about the vaccine and the wireless charging, or the wireless...
Five G and... Okay, you better, you gotta start on this one, this is long.
The kicker on the five G thing is, I learned about a year and a half ago, they're working on six G already. They hadn't wrote out five G, and people were still trying to see what that is, and the communication companies are already developing the six G.
I thought they were working on eight G, am I right?
So...
That sold nineteen ninety-seven, you know?
Yeah, seven dash thirty dash one. Change intent to purpose, purpose, this, in bylaw, there's different places where it says intent, different places where it says purpose. Just be consistent, there should be, the term purpose is more, it should be used throughout. Second sense term guidelines suggests the bylaw is only advisory. Yeah, it's, and intent says, "These guidelines are intended to provide wireless," they're not guidelines, these regulations, these provisions, they're, that, that needs to be changed. Yeah, and...
Yeah, that's a big oops, if we had that in there.
Yeah, and the last line of that paragraph says, "And tailored to the town of South Hadley," I tend to say of the community of South, uh, Southampton, I tend to say the community as opposed to the town as a legal entity.
Why?
I think you're looking at the, and I don't think it's intended to be the town as the town legal entity, but that is how it could be construed. And so I would say the community of Southampton.
Okay.
And seven, yeah, seven dash thirty point two, definition should be moved to section two of the zoning bylaw. Three, uh, three A, for all purposes, that's not necessary to say. Just that the Southampton Plan Board is the special permit granted authority, period.
So end with the word...
Yeah, delete, delete for all purposes under this section. Just say there are the special permit granted authority and shall adopt rules and regulations with respect to administration.
Okay.
Seven dash, three B is not necessary. That follows under your special permit process.
B is not necessary?
Yeah, three B is not necessary at all. Four A one. Yeah. All service providers shall co-locate, shall be designed to structurally accommodate the maximum number of users, technically practical, practical.
Practicable, yeah, I can practically guarantee it.
Well, that's a state, that's a federal law.
But that phrasing is for, on your zoning, I wouldn't put that in there, just, I would just say that it should, should be, and one reason for not putting there is, if you put that under there, okay, well, in order to be technically feasible, I've gotta go much higher. Then I can have eight users on it as opposed to only three. Because the height of the tower is gonna be more of the factor as to how many users they can fit on there than any other, any other factor.
I think that's a good point.
So you're just gonna, wanna just eliminate that shell, starting with shell, just eliminate it, period?
I will...
Just, just lead to the extent feasible, all service providers shall co-locate, co-locate in a single tower?
Shall be designed to structurally accommodate multiple users.
Multiple users.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Okay, so now I get to ask my oddball question. And, I, I'd be very frank with you, most towers are not done, not built by the actual cell, cell company. They're like a vertical shopping center? Where now, and I didn't realize this till a few years ago, that what's happening is, you've got an industry that goes out there and they build towers, and they'll lease some space out to different companies.
Yeah.
Just like a shopping center does. So they will build as high as they can possibly get permission to do, to accommodate the maximum number of tenants. Because it's, it's not, there's not a geometric increase in cost by going higher, there's a geometric increase in revenue generation by going higher. Because if I go a hundred feet, and I can get one user, and I can go a hundred and twenty feet and get two users, that additional twenty feet isn't costing me that much more. But the revenue's gonna be just as much as the first one, and so they, they will go as high as they are permitted to go, so they can accommodate the maximum they think the market will, will allow. And with the consolidation that's occurred in the cell company industry, there's not as many vendors for that space as there used to be.
So I, I have a question, and it kind of gets back to the use of telephone poles, right? Telephone poles, they have to allow the town to, space for lines for, for...
That's for five G.
So my question is, for wireless communication towers, could we also ask that they're required that they reserve some space for, for fire, police, and ambulance communication devices? Because I know that...
By law, they have to do that.
Yeah, they have to accommodate.
This law, state law, federal law.
Federal law.
The FCC's on top of that.
Okay.
Then they won't get FCC license if they design a tower without accommodating public safety.
Oh, good.
And very frankly, you won't find a company that won't do that anyway. Because first thing they're gonna do when they come in to your public area, is they can talk about how they're gonna help your police and fire and emergency management by having antenna space.
It's interesting, because I know we have a need for another tower, for, for that purpose in town, so...
Do we have any towers in town?
There's certain areas...
Red Rock's got one, behind Red Rock.
Yeah, right, you had that one, but there, there's certain areas where they have not the best coverage for the, the, yeah, emergency radio...
I think there's one like running near the, I think it's on Montgomery side, but it's, it's towards the Westfield, but I think that's not on our side. Can I, can we just...
Sure.
So where are we, are we on four?
Four A one, yes.
Four A one.
Four A three, you've got a...
I have, I have a question?
No, I'm fine, I'm just, I was just, I just wanted to make sure.
On four A three, it says, "No tower should be located closer than two miles to any other such tower." What was the, anybody know what the basis for that was?
Can we strike it?
Yeah, I, and I raise it because if you've done, if you've hired a firm that did a location analysis, that indicated where they should be, then you could look at that and say, "That's the basis for saying you can't locate there." But if you just arbitrarily said, "We don't want them closer than two miles apart, and because of topography, they gotta be closer than that," you're not gonna be able to enforce that.
Is that meant to be like an aesthetic thing, like, you know, we don't want too many towers?
Probably, my guess, it was an effort to minimize the opportunity for them to locate for aesthetics.
I see.
This came from Long Mitten, I'm sure.
Didn't have close lines in Long Mitten.
You can't, no, because of their, their preemption under federal law, you're really limited as what you can do, and to arbitrarily say, "Can't be more than two miles apart, more than two, that'd be at least two miles apart," that's, that'd be tough.
So you're, you're suggesting to strike that entire...
Yes.
Can't the same argument be made for the fa, for the following number?
Tower height?
Yeah, what if we need another five feet in order to make it work?
The elevation, the height of it's not so much a problem, because they would come in and demonstrate why they had to be higher, and, and they'll be able to go to the ZBI if necessary. But I would ask why you do have a hundred feet.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
Sounds arbitrary to me.
Where did that come from?
See, when we, when I developed one in South Hadley, I, I had as a model, I, I drafted one, and then we met with representatives, I met with representatives of just about all the cell companies in the valley. The attorneys or the engineers... You know, the attorneys or the engineers or both. And we revised it to a point where it met our objectives, but also made it viable for them.
Right, let's pull from that.
And so that's why we went by with that. And, uh, there was things they didn't like, but they accepted, and there were things I didn't like, but we accepted. Uh, it was a good compromise.
I'll get you an answer in a few minutes.
Okay.
You just text the FCC?
No, I didn't, I know somebody that designed foundations for them, so.
Oh.
Get you an answer for that.
A hundred feet above, um, elevation is going to really depend upon your vegetative height and density. What type of vegetation you have. Does it really mean, I, I don't know. I would get rid of it. Yeah, because if you've got dense, high trees, that's, that's gonna make it real difficult for them to locate antennas on there.
So are you gonna strike that, are you gonna put, are you gonna change the wording? Shall be a minimum of one hundred, minimum?
No, no, no.
No, 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 not minimum. No, but we need to find out what the basis is and come up with more reasonable.
You can't have many lower than that, can you?
Well, what if you have a mountain and you put it, and you only need like fifty feet because you already got high elevation?
Oh, really?
Yeah. I, I worked on one that went up on Mount Tom that was a, like a truss, or kind of a, um, truss-shaped one, which was, which was, which was for H, HG and E. And they didn't have to go that high because they already had the elevation, so.
If you've got a clear top where you don't have tall trees, then they can get much better signal service. If you've got a heavily vegetated top where you've got a hundred-foot tall trees, they can have to go to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty to get any type of service. Especially if they're evergreen.
I think number five needs to be reworded. I, I get what it's saying, but it's very poorly written.
At least equal.
Base of the tower should be a distance of least equal to the tower's height and property line or existing structure.
Is there something to do about, like, if it fell over? Is that what they're trying to say?
That's what it's trying to say.
Well, what it's trying to say is the setback.
So, so we should say the base of the tower shall be located at a distance.
The base of the tower should be set back from the nearest property line at least no less than the height of the tower. By distance of no less than the height of the tower.
I feel like there's a word missing in there, but, yeah, like, location should be the, the base of the tower location.
The location of the base of the tower.
The base of a tower shall be set back from the property line a distance of at least equal to, a distance at least equal to the tower's height. That, that gives you, well, I'm trying to say about the setback of the tower is supposed to be. And, um, if you had subsection setbacks, that'd be one way to sort that out as to what the antenna is.
And I guess we talked about or existing structure, don't most of these antennas have like base stations underneath them? Like they need some type of, uh, I guess, how, some structure to support them?
Yeah, I think that's separate. That's, I mean, what's covered in section seven down below, I think, would be considered separate from.
Okay, not the existing or existing structure that says in five.
There's different types of towers.
Yep.
If you have the lattice type, then you may in fact have a building or equipment shed underneath it. More commonly, they're not underneath it, but they're within the compound.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because you have a compound that's usually fenced in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they have, and they, and some companies don't use buildings. They use, um, just equipment and they, and they put pads out there and set them on there. Some have equipment shelters that they put their land. It varies from one vendor to the next.
I'm just getting caught on, say, or existing, I guess, structure. I guess they probably implied like, if it's on their land, I, I don't think it matters. You know, they can, they can, they can drop a tower on their own, own building if they want.
Um.
Yes, the question should just be from any property line.
We were at seven thirty four A, you wanted to change lot to parcel on seventy four A six?
Yes.
One tower on parcel is permitted on any parcel?
We, we have some parcels in town that are quite large.
For sure. Only one per parcel.
Okay.
Four A seven. Clarify accessory structures.
So, I'm sorry, so going back to se- six, did we strike that or did we keep that?
Six?
Yeah.
Uh, we just changed the lot to parcel.
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
Well, I'm asking, I guess my, my point is.
The base of the tower?
No, no, six, one, only one to, uh.
One tower is on.
Per lot, right, or per parcel.
Per parcel, yeah.
Um, so not, not to say we have a, we have a mountain top like Mount Tom, but.
True.
There are more than one tower, uh, that are up on that mountain that are in the same parcel.
In the same parcel?
Yeah, because that's, 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 I believe that's, uh, I don't know who the owner is, DCR is the state.
The trustees' reservations, is it?
Yeah.
DCR, I think that owns Mount Tom.
But DCR is in from, anyway, because they're a state agency.
I'm sorry?
DCR is not gonna be governed by, anyway, because they're a state agency.
Right. But in that case, that's what I'm getting at, but.
Well, Garrick owns the top of Pomeroy Mountain. Uh, he could, are we saying he could only have one cell tower?
But I mean, but he could subdivide it. There's a problem.
What do you mean that he's subdivided?
Well, he could, he can create an A and R.
He could come here and, and say, I want to subdivide my lot so I could have more than one cell tower.
Correct.
Well, what he probably did is, is he wouldn't tell you why, he'd just say, I want to do A and R and divide the property up. And he probably do that because a company that is going to want to build a tower is going to want to have lease rights with possible ownership rights to that portion of the property at some time in the future.
I see.
Or easement rights. Obviously, they're gonna have easement rights.
Easement rights, uh, but with the capital investment they make in it, some of them do like to have the ability to own it on the land. Um, because it's not, it's a pretty substantial investment they make in those. I was surprised.
So, we leave it?
You want to leave it to the lot, then?
I guess, yeah, I guess we just leave it the way it is. I, I, I don't know why, I don't have a good reason enough to, to strike it.
Yeah, or, or keep it.
I don't, I don't know why it's there. There's ways around it.
Isn't a lot and a parcel the same thing?
Yeah, but sometimes a lot con- conveys.
I think there, if you go into the accessors map, I think there's parcels and there's lots, I think.
A, a lot conveys to many people like a residential building lot. It's, it's more, tends to convey images of something much smaller than larger tract parcel. Okay, but.
Doesn't, uh, Registry use the word lot?
I'm not sure.
I feel like whenever I see, look at plans and has ownership, I think.
There's a lot, like Cindy said, there's lot, lot number and parcel.
Yeah, if you go on the accessors map, there's both.
Lot and parcel.
I've seen both.
What do you want to change on accessory structures on the next one?
Um.
Clarify it?
I think just clarifying that accessory structures, equipment and/or equipment compounds, equipment, um, sheds or panels. Because as I said, what, I know I've dealt with some companies, what they do is they will put concrete pads down and they'll fix equipment to that and like a generator or panels that control the cell tower.
So what's your suggestion?
Uh, in, just, I'll revise it to indicate accessory structures and/or equipment, uh, facilities.
Seven?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Seven thirty four eight A, what does as possible mean?
Yeah.
Existing vegetation shall be preserved as much as possible.
Should be preserved to the maximum extent possible.
There. Shall be preserved, period.
And also.
No, well, no, you can't do that.
Oh.
Maximum, maximum extent possible.
Max.
Practical, practical.
Maximum extent. Practical.
One thing you could look at doing is, and we've required this before, is say, and where vegeta- where trees are moved for allocation, they are to be replaced by a appropriate number of, uh, plantings.
I agree, I agree.
And we haven't had any problems with folks doing that.
Trees are cheap.
Yeah.
So you want to add then another line to eight, correct?
Right, I would suggest something like that.
Okay.
So removal of trees shall be replicated or something like that?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Not replicate, but they will be replaced by appropriate.
Number, and num- number and kind or whatever.
They don't have to replace the trees though, right? Because then they'd have the same height problem.
Yeah, they, yeah.
That's why they have, that's why we have crabapple trees, right?
Right.
And very frankly, it works well for them because one of the issues that they sometimes have, especially if you have nearby houses.
Yep.
People will say, I can see the pay, the equipment compound.
Sure, they want some type of.
So what they do is the replacement is the screening that they put in at the lower level.
Arborvities.
Yeah.
Four A ten, you want, are you suggesting to, it's unnecessary, that section?
Well, can we go back to nine?
Oops, go ahead.
Just because I feel like.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I skipped over that.
So, I, I'm still seeing these pop up all over, um, not necessarily every time I see a new tower come up, but sometimes they try to put up a, put these decorative.
Yeah.
Limbs?
Limbs on them.
Oh, the fake trees.
I know, I know it looks like, you know, an air freshener that you might have in your car, but, um, can we just have the option of that in here? Because we just, we use the word structural design, planting, lighting, but we don't necessarily say.
Um, you know, I, I agree, but why do we have to be more specific? It says number there, the planning board may impose conditions. So if a fake tree comes as a proposal, do we say no?
Well, we want it, what if we want a tree? That's what I'm saying.
These conditions may include structural design.
What if we want a fake tree?
We want it to look like a fake tree.
Paul, Paul, it says, these conditions may include structural design, painting, lighting, and landscaping standards.
Yeah, you can strike.
But that's not a structural design.
Yes, it is.
The little.
Yeah, it is.
Structural design, to me, implies the type of cell tower.
Yeah.
Deboni design.
Yeah, because, and that is, because the type of cell tower includes a monopole where the antennas actually include within the pole itself. They do have those. Then you have the lattice type.
Yes.
And then you have the, what I call the fake tree type. You have monopole with exterior and then you have the fake tree type as well. And most fake tree type, very frankly, don't work too well, but.
Work for what? As in communication or aesthetics?
Aesthetics.
Yeah.
Uh, there's some that do very well. I've seen a few that really blended very well. And I've seen some that, there it is, you can see it my way because all the horizon rises like this and you have this one that stands out.
Yeah, there's one up in, on the Pike.
Oh, yeah, the one on Pike really stands out like a sore thumb.
The one by Framby, is that the one you're talking about?
Uh, can't remember, I haven't been on Pike in a while, but there's one in east that just kind of stands out.
I think the one in Northampton on Pine Grove Golf Course, that was on the Northampton Planning Board, was the first one in town. I think they required that one because it was, it was among pines. I think they required that to have branches.
Where they work out best, in my opinion, is when there's a backdrop, like a mountain that it kind of blends it in to that.
Camouflage.
Uh, not as a standalone.
Right. Um, my girlfriend and I went on a road trip this summer. We're picking, we're going through New Jersey and you can pick out fake trees pretty easily.
So we're, we're just looking to have the option to make a fake tree.
Uh, if you want to, I can elaborate on that, but I, but I think it is a structural design, but I can elaborate on that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was, I mean, I can make an argument, that's not a structural component.
Can we eliminate eight if we're gonna have nine? Because we can, we, the planning board can, um, include things like landscaping standards, which is the same as eight. I think the eight is weird. Veget- existing vegetation shall be preserved, you know, what are we talking? You know, like goldenrod and, you know, weeds and things like that? We don't care if those go. See what I'm saying? But don't you think, don't you think nine covers eight? Do you think we need those?
I think it's helpful to give notice that you're, you're wanting the trees. But I, I get the point that existing vegetation, you're not concerned about the ground cover as much as you're about, although you are somewhat concerned about ground cover because that affects runoff and.
But if we say existing shrubs and trees shall be preserved if you're gonna keep eight, not just vegetation.
Ten. He said it's got Schenler since four A.
Yeah.
Like a duplication or something?
Yeah, four A one requires that they design them to accommodate multiple carriers. But then you go back to ten and you talk about any proposed extension height, addition of cells, antennas, or panels. Construction of new facility or replacement facility should require a new application for amendment. Um, if you're already requiring them to design it to cover multiple carriers, then you shouldn't be requiring a special permit for addition of cells, antenna, or panels.
I agree with that statement.
Uh, because you, you already tell them, uh, cover additional, um.
Well, they would have to come back.
Carriers.
Yeah, but that, but that's inherent to the additional height.
Right.
So that, because you're extending the pole, that I think.
If you're extending, if you're extending above the already permitted height, then yes, they have to come back for amendment.
Right, right, right.
But if they're.
Adding cells.
Adding cells, antenna, or panels that are covered by the existing application. Because they said they were, were building, were building a hundred and twenty-foot tall tower.
Yes.
And we're gonna, and doing this to accommodate three carriers. They've got two of them on, and then two years later, they get third coming in, they shouldn't have come back for a special permit to put the third carrier on because it's already covered under the original special permit.
Agreed, but should we maintain that any proposed extension in height and then strike the next portion?
I, I think, I think any, I would go beyond that. I would say any alteration, addition beyond the original approved special permit plans requires amendment to special permit.
Mm-hmm. Sure, yeah, right. I, I could see the, the point of it originally because it does change the aesthetics of it by adding any additional antenna, right? So I see that people, there does seem to be some concern about the appearance of this, so. so no matter what they add to it, it can obviously change it, so.
As long as, as long as the alteration is consistent with the original special permit, they shouldn't have come back.
Right.
And that, that includes replacement of panels and antennas. And I say that because what, the technology is such that they change them every, at least every two years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they have to, and sometimes they increase the height by two inches, decrease the width, uh, sometimes they increase, they increase both, uh, but it's still keeping within the original proposal, and therefore they shouldn't have come back.
Yep. You're suggesting in the next one, that 5A3 is similar to the one you just, you just mentioned, 5A3.
Yes.
Same comments as your.
Yeah, and so I would, again, there, if any, any alteration beyond the original approval, original special permit or site plan, so any approval would require a special permit, otherwise they would not.
Mm-hmm. 5A4, what's, clarification, does cabling or electrical installation support the facility need to be integral? Here's some wording for you. All building units should be designed like a specific.
Yeah.
You don't want a brick building with then all these metal panels on the outside, the brick should be outside of everything.
The question I raise is, for instance, Mount Hoda College Library has one or two cell installations on top of it, and to do that, they had run cabling up along the building. Well, the cabling is not integral to the building, they, they colorized it so that it fits in with the brick building, it's impossible. The South Haley Historic Commission signed off on it, everybody's fine with it. But the question comes up, is that integral to being part of the existing architecture? The cabling? Uh, that, that's the, that's the question I come into, because from my experience, the antennas, they can put usually behind the parapet and don't see them from the ground, it's the, it's the cabling, and sometimes they would have to do a ground-mounted generator. Now, on the ground stuff, we've been able to get them to usually put vegetation around it, so you can't see that from exterior. So I just raised the question that, do you want to make clear that, uh, use of painting and shrub landscaping are to be designed to minimize the extent to which cabling and other support elements.
I personally think as it's written, it covers enough that we could deal with it on an as-needed basis.
Okay.
I don't know anybody else.
Okay.
Moved.
Six, 5A6.
5A6.
What is historic structure?
You're made to historic structure to.
Does Southampton have a?
We have a historic district.
We have a, we have a district, we have a commission.
But district refers to historic structure.
Do we have any historic struc- do we have any old buildings? Yeah.
Schoolhouse.
But, but what is historic structure is my, is my question, is that defined anywhere? Is that, is there a list of historic structures, so that if I'm, if I'm a cell company and I'm looking, I've hired Paul here to, Paul A. or Paul B., to find me a location, is there a list they can go to to know that I got to stay off these, away from these groups?
There is actually, when we did the master plan update.
Historic register.
Yeah, and, and as time passes, things get older and more things get added to it, so there is a list of historic structures.
Then we need to identify that list. We need to identify what the list is, so that we can reference it.
Just put out, refer to the historic register, Southampton Historic Register, is that what it is?
I don't think it's called a register, but it's, it's actually held with the state, I think.
Well, there's a state register, and if you're referring to structures on the state rest of historic places, we can refer to that.
I, I don't think it's that, I think it's a, a list of buildings that are old enough to fall into the category, and they're not really on a register. Do you notice that there's a difference? Isn't there, historic register means something else, doesn't it?
Well, you've, you've got the state register, you've got the federal register.
Oh, okay.
There's a, there's a National Register of Historic Places and the State Register of Historic Places.
Can I help?
There's also a state, there's also inventory of historic places that a lot of communities do, but being on the inventory doesn't make it historical.
I think it's more of the inventory. If you'd like, I can ask somebody and get back to you originally.
And I say that because it's, it's important when you say that any alteration made to historic structure to accommodate wireless, it be clear what that, what is meant by historic structure.
So I think it's, I mean, I know there's other bylaws, I'm just taking a look at something that was updated, updated that uses the preservation of historically significant buildings. So I think, yeah, we'll need to do a little more research to see what other bylaws use, but we should just make it consistent.
Historically significant is good wording.
But we need to define what we mean by historic structure here.
Yeah, yeah. So let me ask a member of our historic commission, how, what wording might be more appropriate, they can actually discuss it at their meeting maybe?
They can adopt a historic town registry and get with it.
There it is. 6A is written a bit confusing. It says are allowed by a special permit only in all districts, and then lists what the districts are.
So it's not in all districts.
Is there a district that's not allowed in? And if it's, um, if it's not allowed in all districts, then it should be by special permit only in the following districts.
How many districts have we got? I think that's all of them that are there.
That's what I thought so too.
R, R N, R V, C V, C H, I P. The only thing I don't see is, yeah, you got industrial, commercial highway, it looks like they're pretty much there.
Yeah.
Which one's, what's F P?
Flood plane?
Oh.
Thank you.
Do we have the flood plane?
R V, C V, C H. I don't see that in our, that's not in this one, this table. I think that's all of them.
So I would say that are allowed by special permit in all districts, leave out only in, and.
Well, why do we need to say anything beyond, facilities are allowed by special permit, period?
Well, I think it's, maybe it's better if it says it's in all districts, that way they're, they're notice that, hey, everybody's, you can go in any district, you're not, typically you're not allowed in all districts, that's, that's the reason.
Now, here's, here's something that is, is it worth considering though? Would someone like to see one right down here in this commercial, in this historic village?
Probably not.
You know, here, here we didn't want a Dunkin' Donuts, but do we want a, do we want a cell tower somewhere around here?
Well, remember, we're talking wireless facilities. Wireless facilities means not only a tower, but also means panels on top of an existing building where you may not see the panels.
Yeah. You have a lot of latitude with the special permit.
Right.
No, but I mean, does it, does anybody have any issue with regulating it in certain districts or disallowing it?
One, one option would be, for instance, if you have that, you could say, um, back to, uh, requiring tower construction, say, uh, wireless communications towers are only allowed in the following districts.
Yeah, right.
By special permit. And then you say wires, uh, no, facilities on existing structure, they may be allowed in all districts, because an existing structure is not, and then you have some type of specification as to screening, so it's, it's not visible. Um, and there's different ways of approaching that.
So you're saying wireless communication facilities is a very broad concept?
Yeah.
Not just towers?
Right.
Not just panels? So answering what you just asked, Paul, I think that this is our town hall, you know, it, it's right here in our historic district, if you will, so likely it would be great if we had the right kind of wireless communication facilities right here, or the old police station or something, but it wouldn't necessarily be a, a tower, you know?
Yeah, I was just throwing that out there to see if anybody, because of how sensitive some things, certain things are in this village district, historic district, that that would ruffle any feathers. I think, I mean, if you polled the population of the town, I think you'd get a mixed response.
You would get it on, I start that, I go on.
Okay. So, but it says special permit, so that's incumbent on the planning board to do some due diligence if something was to come before us, to make sure the town does want it, not just the five members of the planning board.
Well, planning board has to make that, that determination, means the special permit criteria.
You, we could, you could leave it in all districts, and then when the public hearing comes about, you put maybe a bug in the select board's ear, or whomever that might want to come to that hearing when the time comes and state their case then.
Or the historic mission, or the, somebody else, yeah?
I would suggest that, that you look at the idea of limiting freestanding towers to specific districts, if you don't want them in other districts, because that gives a very clear communication that, don't go in your village center and propose a tower. They're, most likely, they couldn't meet the setback requirements.
It's kind of, it's kind of a low part of the town too, so it's not ideal, but that's here and there.
If they're going to a 100-foot tower, then they have to be at least 100 feet off the property line.
Yeah.
In many cases, they'd be hard-pressed.
I bet, I bet some people in R V would have, would be, you own a contention with them in the residential village, some areas there too, you know?
Yep. No, no one ever wants one in their backyard.
Well, I will tell you this, I was a member of a church in a, in a whole different community once, and the church needed money, and what they looked at was having a tower on the highest point in the church, because it was going to bring revenue in, like 10, 12,000 a year at that time, and they needed it, you know? So wouldn't that be interesting if that's what this church thought?
Well, usually, don't churches put them inside the, inside the structure?
No, this was to rent space on their high, on the highest point, like on their steep.
On the tower, say, on a tower, on the.
Typically, the, what they would do is they would put the panels on top of the roof.
Yeah.
But like in, like, I know we're not Florida, but in Florida, they have them hidden inside the stevens?
Okay, now, you bring up a good question. My church in Northampton on King Street, we were approached by a company, I won't say who, they had this freestanding device that they wanted to put in the basement of the church, that would, that would, um, was it some sort of a station that would give, all I can think of is, give a, like a charging station to give more signal or something?
A booster.
A booster of some sort. They wanted access to it 24/7, they wanted to put a, a generator on-site in case of power failure. They were offering, and all they wanted was an area 10 by 10, okay? They offered $200 a month, and I'm sitting myself, why would, why would we want to waste our time with all the provisions they had for $200 a month to provide this type of, and it's got to be worth some bucks, what they're doing. And the reason they said they offered that price is because that was the going rate of storage space.
Oh, boy, it's not storage, yeah.
I said, well, let's talk what the actual square footage lease space is in downtown Northampton, instead of just storage space, and you might have something, but I can't, it's, it had something to do, this must have something to do with telecommunications or cable or something.
It's a hard booster. It's going to boost the power in the system. But, you know, typically, they'll locate the antennas on top and then put the equipment, panels, equipment shelter, either in the basement or at the foundation of the building. And then un-cabling up on the side of the building. And that's what I've seen.
Okay.
So, and I know the fire district one in South Haley has four or five carriers on one tower, on one water tank, and I think three on the other, and that pretty much covers a good chunk of their periodic repainting of their water tank.
So I don't know, so I guess, leave it for public hearing and, or, we can revisit it before it goes there, I suppose, if, if somebody does some, we want to do some inquiring with the historic folks and select board to see if there should be any restrictions anywhere.
I think that's all great, and I think, I wonder, how can we put wording in there that represents what he's saying?
Well, as he, as Richard said, you can, you know, you can just develop the language of where it's allowed and where it is not allowed.
Yeah, I mean, you can identify which.
Roof structures versus towers versus whatever, you know?
Yeah. The difference is the, uh, freestanding tower versus an existing structure. Because if you're in an existing structure, you tend to not have as much controversy with those, because people look more, like, can you hide the panels? And I have yet found where they cannot screen the panels from, have a view from a road because typically, they're going to be 30, 40, 50 feet of height, and they set them back 10 feet from the parapet, and you can't see them from the ground. The only thing you see sometimes is the cabling, and they will usually be willing to camouflage those with the painting scheme.
Another thing that was interesting, he, he stopped emailing me, but there was a guy from some telecommunications company that would email me every month for a couple of years, asking if any cell towers were on the horizon to come before the board. And I don't know whether he.
Was he like a resident, or was he a company?
No, he was, he was from a, a company, and he kept up asking every month, anything on, anything coming before the board, anything?
I guess, is they had a client that has a void in their service area, and they were looking for spots somewhere in Southampton, and they had no existing structures they could locate on.
Okay.
I thought he was probably trying to protect their interests somehow, or whatever, I don't know.
The, I hadn't listed this one, but I, I assume when you mean scenic roads, we're talking about designated scenic roads.
Yes, yes.
So I'm going to add designated in there.
Well, it's capitalized, so.
Just to go back to the question of heights of poles, so.
Oh, yeah.
Geotech engineer I work with, who worked on cell towers.
That was on number four?
Four.
44?
100 feet above the existing terrain.
So current standard right now across the country is typically from 80 to 150 feet, and sometimes as much as 200 feet. There are other types, as we talked about with the lattice, the self-support lattice, there's also the stealth towers, as they call them. But to answer a question of 100-foot maximum, to me, that seems like a arbitrary. But, to answer our question of 100-foot maximum, to me, that seems like a arbitrary limitation.
Yeah, I would agree.
Do you, do you want to go up to the two or do you want to go to 150 and, and say, or do you give the board the option up to 200 feet?
I think you would, I think you would say maximum height of X amount and they have to demonstrate the need for it. And when, when the other.
It will cost money. When you get 200 feet, you're now talking about
Huge bucks.
Ridiculous dollars, not only for the structure, but for the foundation, because it's going to create a monster moment.
The other aspect to also keep in mind when you think about structural is like these artificial tree-looking things. If, if you limit a tower to 140 feet and then you say it needs to look like, simulate a tree, you need to give additional five, 10 feet to accommodate the simulation. Learned that through one of the, through peer review consultant that we used, that he explained that, yes, if you want to simulate a tree, then you've got to increase the height of the tower a little bit to accommodate that.
I think that we should just say tower height to be, you know, approved by the planning board. I don't know if it makes sense to.
You need to specify maximum height. You can't say just ask.
Not to exceed 150.
Yeah, not to exceed 150 then, if that's the higher end of standard.
You good with that, Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that with your associate.
Okay, uh, where are we at? 6C, item five.
Environment standards. Security.
Security barrier. What is meant by security barrier? Are we talking about just the chain link fence they put around it?
Ground mounted equipment for personal wireless services shall not generate pollution at the, at the security barrier.
I was trying to find where we say they need to have a security barrier. 34.
I think that makes more sense to have the noise measured at the propping line.
Yeah, right? It's their property.
Well, property line, what if it's a 10-acre?
Well, then no, no trespassing, right?
The, the concern, think about, what is the concern of the planning board and the public? That there not be intrusion into the neighbor's property.
Right.
So if you have it measured at the propping line, you're making, you're making sure it's not current there. And that's a.
50 dB equivalent to?
50 dB is a quiet office or quiet conversation.
Oh, it is, okay. Does it sound like tinnitus?
Hey, Dan, to answer your, your question there, I think, up above at the top of the page, number five.
Yep.
All facilities shall be protected against unauthorized access by the public.
So that's the, the chain link?
That would be security, whether it's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They could, they could determine how they're going to do that.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So I would change under 6C5, security barrier to propping line.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay.
6C6.
And is that the same for the E1, the, the roof mounted or side mounted?
No, that's six, not E.
Oh, sorry, I have the book. I printed it out from our website, so.
The, the difference with a roof mounted or side mounted equipment is that tho, those are going to be on existing buildings that people are possibly frequenting, such as a library.
Ah, okay.
So it's, it's not like a tower where you can say it's got to be at the propping line. It's, it's going to be a different space setting.
Does that make sense?
Okay, and.
730, 7A. 7A. Reference the FCC or?
Right. I wouldn't, yeah, I would, I think it had in, I would, I would just reference the FCC guidelines and not get into the specific guidelines because they may change.
Isn't it kind of a moot point anyway, because it's not our say?
Right.
8A, what is unused and used?
Yeah, that's, I wouldn't get in a big issue on that, but just, that, that's going to be an issue, some, I'd determine, some point.
So no big deal there or what?
No, I'm not as big, I just raised the question that, I'm going to be thinking about that because it was up there, who knows if it's being used or not? The issue really comes into the, the tower, not the antenna, because if it's, if it's antennas on a building, if the owner's not getting their rent, they're going to have them removed. That's an issue.
So you're saying the towers, we don't even know if they're being used sometimes, who may not know?
Not because, and it becomes an issue if it becomes neglected. And that's because then it comes in disrepair and nobody's maintaining it, just like billboards.
Yeah.
And this where this, the whole issue of a removal bond came from was from the billboard example. Because somebody puts billboard out there and it becomes derelict and falling apart and eyesore. Well, same with the freestanding tower, if it's done by a, let's say Southampton LLC, it means that's the only asset they probably own. And if they, they lose their tenant, Verizon merges with whomever and whomever doesn't pay the rent. It becomes unmaintained structure.
It becomes eyesore.
Okay. I, I think we should add something in A, it says dismantled, removed at the owner's expense. I think they should, we should also say, and the site needs to be repaired or re, or reinstalled. Restored, that's the thing, restored to similar.
Original state?
Original state or something.
Or similar.
Good call.
The reality is you can restore it to its original state because they took down
Yeah.
80-foot tall trees and they're not going to find 80-foot tall trees back.
Restore to the, consistent with the area.
Or they tore down an old, broken-down house. You don't want them to build an old, broken-down house to make it back to the similar state.
Did they change suitable to sufficient?
I reorganized that section a little bit too.
Are we going to go through this whole section? It's nine o'clock.
We're just not done with this one.
Yeah, we're just, we've only got a few more things and when we're done, we're going to adjourn. I don't want to, we're so close to finishing.
At nine.
Keep going here.
Again, nine, I would take the applicant, the criteria is appropriate, but I would not include the application procedures in here. Those should be within your policies and procedures. And I do want to raise one point and says applicant must be licensed communication carrier. Oftentimes they're not the carrier, they're just the developer. They're licensed to, licensed by FCC to be able to install, but they're not actually the carrier.
So should it be an FCC licensed provider installed?
I don't think, I think the key is that the, that the operation of is by licensed as a carrier.
So are you saying strike that line?
Yeah, I would.
Makes sense. I mean, but that's, once again, going back to the FCC, because they have to get an FCC license.
And I, the applicant criteria I'd scratch altogether because the issue is that the carrier is licensed by FCC.
So delete nine.
9A and, yeah, actually not, all of nine would be appropriate, delete all nine.
Everything in nine?
Let me see. Yeah.
There's a sighting situat, I mean, there's a location identification.
Well, that's, that's what, that should be in your application policies and procedures. Right. Yeah, I would say everything in nine should be in the policies and procedures or deleted entirely.
Well, there are items in here, I would imagine H, sight lines, that I don't think that's a condition that's defined.
Yeah, what I would do, what I would, let me suggest this, is that nine, reference that the planning board is to adopt policies and procedures to govern the application. Those policies and procedures shall include general application requirements, but also must include requirements regarding sightline, submittals, and certain other specific things that are specific to wireless communication towers. And that way you can still address that in your policies and procedures, but it makes it clear that you have to do that within bylaw.
So that's the, all of nine then you're saying, right?
Right.
Okay.
And I had some questions about some of them that we can skip over since we're going to take that out. The, in this, 7-30.11.
What section 10 is being referenced, I can see that needed.
Yeah. What portions of section 10 is being referenced? And section 10. Special permit requirements. So I'm assuming that what's meant is all application requirements and standards of review. So I would just, what I would do on item 11 is just state that the planning board shall adopt policies and procedures to govern applications consistent with the special permit process.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, we got two of them done.
Yeah. Making progress, this is great.
So then, are you available the next, no, you're not, are you available our second meeting of the month or just the first meeting?
Usually just the first.
Just the first. So we'll resume with you, the next section.
It'd be February 2nd. Groundhog Day.
What about the other item on our agenda, this three-Fish Farmway?
Yeah, I was just going to go to that after I dismiss Richard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
To pick up with common driveways and the rest of it, next time we convene. Yeah, the only other agenda item I had over the holidays, Tom Quinn, our former building inspector, who is also a builder himself, dropped a building permit off in my box for one of the lots on Pitch Farm Way, which is well under the 40,000 stormwater. So I approved that for him to expedite it. So. Want to formally give me a vote on that? I already signed off. Good night, Richard, see you tonight. Thank you. I'll take a motion that I approve that.
Second? Or did you want a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion and you can second.
Okay.
Now, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any committee reports that need to be mentioned, anything important at this time?
I don't know if you knew that at the select board meeting last night, Sarah and I were appointed to the building reform, public safety, they're calling it building meeting now. Sarah's going to be, in my opinion, great with stuff because she's got all the background.
You know, you know John Freeman, right? You must know John.
Um, I don't, I mean, I know who he is, I know.
He's a jerk.
He is a really nice man.
I know, I need to, to be honest, several people have.
Just walk over and say hi.
John, John worked very closely with Charlie Knickie on that last one.
Okay.
Attended a lot of meetings. He, don't, don't be afraid to lean on him. He'd be, wasn't glad to help you out.
Yeah, okay, very good to know.
They're just around the corner from you folks.
Yeah, a bit across the street from here.
Yeah.
Yeah, just pretty corner of there, yeah.
Other than that, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Oh, I don't know.
We missed jeopardy, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Who's second is that? Sarah?
Hi, David.
Aye.
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 So, if we don't have any business coming up, I'll, I'll cancel. I'll keep you abreast of things, but there hasn't been much happening.
I can't be here anyway, so.
Yeah, I agree.